Welcome to the June 8th meeting of the Penfield Board of Education. This meeting is called back to order at 6:34. Please rise and the clerk will lead us in the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is recommended that the board approve the June 8th, 2021 agenda as submitted. So may I have a motion to approve the June 8th, 2021 be approved as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. It is recommended that the board approve the consent agenda, including the minutes of the annual vote and election of May 18th, 2021 as submitted, the minutes of the public hearing and regular board meeting of May 25th, 2021 as submitted, the acceptance of the recommendation from the committee of special education, the acceptance of the recommendation from the committee of preschool, special education, the acceptance of the recommendation from the superintendent for personnel changes, budget transfers July 1st, 2020 through May 31st, 2021, and request to renew contracts with Intercept Security and Empire State Weeklys and Connolly Printing, and approval of the request to dispose of unserviceable textbooks. So may I have a motion as second that the board approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. It is recommended that the board approve the treasurer's report, including the cash report, the general fund cash report, the general fund revenue status report, the general fund budget status report, the school lunch fund cash report, the school lunch fund revenue and expense budget report for the month ending April 30th, 2021 be approved. So may I have a motion and a second?
So, second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Which brings us to special reports. And Tom, I think you have some special reports.
We do.
One that we look forward to every year.
Yeah. We actually, we have two special reports this evening. The first is our first robotics presentation. So if you guys wanna, are you coming down to present down here? However you are, you want to get, start getting set up while I just talk about that other special report? I will just share with this report as the students are coming up, is that actually the first robotics, our first robotics team here in Penfield, has presented at every May board meeting for quite a long time. And last year was the first year that they didn't present because if you remember, we were still virtual for our meetings. And then this year, thank you for the advisors and coaches and for students, I'm sure, pushing your advisors and coaches to make sure that you got on the docket and that's why you're here tonight. So after our first robotics presentation, we'll be doing the campus project update. So we have campus construction here to walk through a bit of that and we'll do that introduction then. I think it's important though that this robotics team before you present, and I hope I'm not stealing the thunder, but we do have two board members, I believe, wearing robotics pants right now. So if you want to show off, I think you should. I think you should make sure you know that. I won't steal any more of your thunder. So thank you. And I'll turn it over to you guys. Make sure you introduce yourself and grade level as well.
Yeah. So we are all students part of the high school's first robotics competition team. My name's Nicole. I've been a part of FIRST for five years and I'm the team captain.
My name is Nick. Oh, thank you. Thank you. My name is Nick. I've been part of FIRST for eight years and I am the student coordinator on the team.
My name is Marissa. I've been in FIRST for seven years and I'm the advocacy coordinator.
We do have a presentation.
You do and it's in there. So there should be a clicker.
Oh, how exciting.
And if you point it this way over here is where the computer is.
Oh, there. Ah, there we go.
All right.
All right. So, oh, that's our team. This year, our team consists of 29 students, including 25 mentors, with six L3 Harris employees and 19 community mentors, which includes seven alumni mentors who have come back to help our team out, and eight alumni parent mentors. And we also have our two lead teachers, Mr. Wisbrood and Mr. Pizzo.
At the Miami Valley Regional in Ohio, we earned the chairman's award, which is the highest honor in FIRST, and celebrates the team's impact in their backyard and beyond. Our season ended because of the COVID pandemic. We'll be persevered through the challenges by continuing to meet virtually and springing into action with our COVID response.
After leaving a competition due to COVID, we immediately donated our lunches to the food shelf and we continued to push through our community service efforts, even through virtual meetings. We have a list up on the PowerPoint of some of our favorite community service efforts from the pandemic shutdown. We helped our community medically by 3D printing 255 face shields, donating foods to hospitals, and donating computer power to help research a vaccine. We also showed our creative side through our seven-part YouTube series, We Can Robot, where we explained STEAM topics in an easy-to-understand manner. My favorite were the more than 1,000 STEM kits we made for school-aged children.
This season, rather than participate in our typical competitions, we participated in the three challenges provided to us by FIRST. This included the game design challenge, where we won the concept award, the innovation challenge, where we were semifinalists, and our infinite recharge at home or robot challenges, where we ranked fourth and won the quality award. So we still had a very successful season.
And on top of all of that, our team captain Nicole won the Dean's List finalist award, which recognizes a secondary student for their leadership and dedication to FIRST.
We also would like to shout out the middle school FTC team, Team 6996 Oncoming Storm, with their participation in the 2020 and 2021 FTC ultimate goal season. Their team consists of 12 students and two apprentices, and they met virtually from November through February and in person from March through their competition season in late May. In spite of this year's abbreviated schedule, the team still designed a robot and built it, as well as performing well in all aspects of this year's game. They participated in one remote qualifier, ranking 13th out of the 30 participating teams.
Through our 17 years of FIRST, the team has accomplished a lot of cool achievements. Out of 4,000 teams throughout the world, we have the third-most chairman's wins with nine wins. We also have the eighth-most championship subdivision wins.
In FIRST, everyone can go pro and you don't need any experience to get in on the action. It's an explosion of opportunity and there's so much to do on the team in so many different areas. Skills that you attain in FIRST carry on to your career and we constantly hear from our alumni that say that the skills they learned in FIRST have put them ahead of the game compared to their peers.
Currently, Penfield School District has FIRST programs available for all students second through 12th grade, with 134 robotic students in the past season, with 15 FLL Explore students, 76 FLL Challenge students, and 14 FTC students, along with our 29 FRC students.
So I've come up through the program all the way from junior FLL, which is now called FLL Explore, now all the way up to FRC. And in my FLL years, I remember seeing 1511 members in the camo pants and I knew I wanted to get to FRC and be part of the team. Along my journey, as I worked my way up, I learned public speaking skills, teamwork, the engineering design process, cooperation, and much more. This program has been so beneficial to me and my growth as a student and an individual that I want to continue to encourage students just like me to join and start their own journeys.
I also grew up in the program from FLL to FRC. When I was just three years old, I saw FRC members wearing their camo pants at my elementary school and I was determined to join the team. When I showed up at my first FLL meeting, I was terrified and I hid behind my dad and I wouldn't talk to anyone. Once they broke me out of my shell, I learned an unbelievable amount, both educationally and personally. I've learned to trust and believe in myself and advocate for myself and others. I firmly believe I would be a different person if it weren't for the FIRST program. The team's inclusivity is also very important to me as a disabled LGBTQ female. When I first joined the team, I was terrified that my wheelchair would prevent me from working on the robot or participating in the team's events. But my teammates and mentors all go out of their way to make sure I've been included in everything. Additionally, 1511 is a member of FIRST's LGBTQ plus allyship. Throughout my time on the team, I've gained a ton of new skills, just like every student before and after me. Our overall team events have given me practical skills such as teamwork, event planning, and marketing. Year-round, we keep our technological skills up by learning and practicing mechanical, electrical, and programming skills. Through writing award submissions and participating in events, we gain writing skills like essay writing, planning, and group writing. Many of our alumni have come back and told us that they learned skills on the team that they didn't revisit until their junior year in college.
Students are always encouraged to take the lead on new initiatives. Our leadership team is student-run with mentor support. As the student coordinator on the team, my role is to recruit new students and check in on our current students to see if they have any feedback for the team. I bridge the student body and the leadership team to make sure that all voices are heard. Beyond the leadership team, we believe that every student on our team can be a leader. They can lead by spearheading a sub-team, running a demo, or just even being a role model for others.
We learn the fundamental skills of engineering through the process of building our robot. We learn skills that we are often unable to learn in class, like the real-life applications of CAD and physics, and actually building parts and writing code. Robotics allows us to gain a better understanding of the skills that we learn in school. To ensure that everyone learns the skills they want to learn, we structure ourselves using sub-teams. In the beginning of the season, students choose which of the major sub-teams they want to be a part of, like our robot-based sub-teams such as mechanical or programming, or our non-robot sub-teams such as marketing, advocacy, or chairmans, that they want to be a part of, and develop unique skills and talents within these groups. During field season, students utilize what they have learned and contribute to the overall success of the team. We also get hands-on experience working with professional engineers, including our six L3 Harris employees. This helps connect the things we do at meetings to their real-life applications. Here is a video we have of one of our past alumni. Her name is Shawna. I don't know if we can play that. Ooh, I don't know how to play that.
From the 2008 to 2011, or 2010 season. Graduated in 2010 and went to University of Buffalo, where I graduated summa cum laude with degrees in aerospace and mechanical engineering. I now work at NASA Johnson Space Center in Houston, Texas, as a flight controller, where I fly the space station, which is what I'm doing tonight, and also working on Artemis missions to the moon. My college wouldn't want to hear it, but I honestly think that I learned more that I use in my job on a day-to-day basis from my three years in robotics than I did in my five years from university. You'd be taught me more stuff about like equations, like deeper technical skills, but robotics taught me things that I wouldn't have learned anywhere else. Confidence, how to work in a team, gave me an introduction to all kinds of things, all different kinds of engineering. And let me tell you, that saved me and my parents a lot of money when I was in college because I didn't have to change my major a single time. It also, the connections that I made through competitions and other teams on robotics, like traveling around, it was what got me my first internship at Delphi Automotive, which ended up giving me an internship, that experience ended up giving me an internship at NASA, which is what got me my full-time employment here flying the space station, which is what I'm doing, as I said, tonight. I, without a doubt, can say that I would not be where I am today if it wasn't for Rolling Thunder, 1511, whatever you want to call it. I also think that the friendships that I made from that experience are invaluable. They're the main people that I want to visit when I go home, when I get to go back to New York. They're the first people I check in with. They are the best people I could ask for and I'm actually going to see one of my best friends that I met on the robotics team in Seattle in a few weeks. And so it has opened up so many doors for me. My only regret about being on the robotics team is that I didn't join my freshman year and that it wasn't until my sophomore year that I actually ended up joining. But yeah, robotics team has been absolutely invaluable to my life.
Awesome.
The experiences and skills gained through this team are ones that last a lifetime. Seventeen alumni have returned over the years to teach, aid, and inspire success. We were recently able to help incorporate FIRST into all Penfield schools. And through our work with the FIRST Lego League teams in the community, we have been giving those younger than us an opportunity to work with high schoolers and learn valuable skills such as problem solving at a very young age. Many of these young students end up progressing through different levels of FIRST as they grow up, including through the FIRST Tech Challenge team at the middle school and through our FIRST Robotics Competition team at the high school. In fact, 87% of our FIRST Tech Challenge prodigies at Bay Trail have continued their journeys by joining our team.
One of our team's biggest efforts is advocacy. We have meetings with representatives on the state and national level year-round and constantly work on improving our relationships with them. Just a few weeks ago, we had Assemblyperson Jen Lunsford see our robot in action and to check out our shop. We also pride ourselves on teaching other teams how to advocate through events such as the National Advocacy Conference, New York Advocacy Conference, and the State Advocacy Summit. But with all this advocacy work, what are we aiming for? We're currently lobbying for Bill A1219, which allocates money to start new and assist existing New York FIRST teams. We have a vision for the future of FIRST, both our team and other teams.
So this is Operation Thunderstruck and our future plans for going forward. So we have dreamed for years of having a facility where all levels of FIRST could come together, kind of like a FIRST hub for Penfield. There are other teams with practice facilities in the Rochester area and it has benefited their district very greatly by inspiring students to get into STEAM and has improved their competition performance as well. FIRST provides curriculum for schools that we could use in our district. Class packs are available for all grade levels and we want to get them into the curriculum. We would also like to do a multi-grade level event, what we call a FIRST Day, that incorporates STEAM activities. We would also like to develop strategies to increase teacher leadership and mentorship in Penfield's FIRST teams. Other local teams have become co-curricular with their district policy. We need to investigate transitioning from a club to a co-curricular team where FIRST Robotics aligns with the curriculum. Just this past weekend, we hosted the Rochester Recharge Scrimmage, where we hosted nine teams in the East Gym to play last year's game. We would like to invite you all to attend these upcoming events so you can really experience FIRST in the impact that it has on the students for yourself. When our upcoming events become closer, we'll send out more formal invitations to give you a little bit more information. It would mean so much to us if you were able to attend, as we are proud of our achievements and we would love to show you what we do.
And with that, we would like to thank you for giving us some of your time out of your meeting today to share with you what we do. If you have any questions, we would love to answer them. Thank you.
Oh, great. Thank you so much. Board members, any questions or comments? Barb?
I just want to say, I, as probably the senior person on the board, this is one of the things I look forward to every single year because it just blows me away how well all of you are doing. And listening to you say that you, as a little preschooler, saw this and were inspired, that just spoke to my heart. So congratulations on your scholarship. Congratulations on everything. And Nick, is it Nick? No.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep. Nick, I, as a former speech therapist, I'm just impressed with how you speak because you've got a commanding voice. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Other board members? Abby?
I also have a comment. I just wanted to say that every time I make a sheet that goes over what is happening in the Penfield District for a board meeting, I always see something for robotics and I think it's really admirable how much support you've given to the Penfield community.
Thank you, Abby. Catherine?
I wanted to commend you on not only your presentation, but your advocacy work with Assemblywoman Lunsford. I think it's wonderful that you're stepping into that arena and understanding that whole process. It's long, it's drawn out, there's a lot of work that goes into it, and you may not get what you're, you know exactly what you're asking for, but it's great civic duty, it's great civic involvement, and I'm very, very impressed that you're already starting on that road. So congratulations on that end as well.
Thank you.
I would like to add that, you know, it's, you mentioned it where you're, the one that I have come back and told you how much this has helped. And I don't think, it's still hard to appreciate where you are today, how much this will help you going forward. It really is a good, great program. The, you know, the career you, one of the things that a parent always is concerned about is will their kids be able to make a living, have a good career? And as the world changes, you know, what careers are viable and which ones aren't changes. And you're definitely in one that will have a long-time future of success. So it really is something that we all support, that we all think is incredibly valuable and we're glad that you're doing it and we're glad that you're helping bring up the younger students to keep this going. And I would encourage you to give us, you know, to send us your formal invitations because it's easy for us to not catch everything going on. And if you send us the invitations, that makes it that much easier for us to make sure we attend. All right. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
Actually, we have, we have a special guest really quick. We would like to introduce, on the stage right now, we have our robot from last year. Its name is Darth Underus the Wise. It does appreciate loud applause. Yeah, so I think we're going to do, just drive it around really quick so that you can see, yeah, we build robots and look, they're big and colorful.
So first off, this is our intake system, which intakes the power cells, which are the yellow dodge balls you see on the floor. Isaac, if you'd like to proceed intaking, I'll talk about the helix and the whole transition system. So as you can see, the balls roll right along our intake roller, which has mecanon wheels on it, which are specially shaped that we put them together and because of the nature of the rollers on the wheels, the balls move right across the intake into our helix, which is our ball storage system. So as you can see, there are lights on the robot, five red ones. That lets us know that there are five balls in the robot at one time. And as we shoot them out, that counter goes down. So when we're driving in competition, we have an accurate representation of what's going on with the robot because per the rules of the game, you're only allowed to hold five and if you break the rules, you get a penalty and we don't want to break the rules. So right now, I believe we're going to demo the shooter as well. We have a drum flywheel on the inside of the shooter with an adjustable hood that allows us to adjust the angle of our shots as needed to score points. It's quite powerful. We've made a couple adjustments over the course of the virtual season so that we could get the full impact of our shooter, the full range of motion, everything like that. Alex, if you want to take it away? So right now, we're adjusting the hood. And there it is. And as you can see, the ball counter went down, telling us there are four balls in the helix, which again is very important in competition. And another aspect of competition is the end game, where we have to hang on the generator switch, which is a tilting switch. And our 3D printed hooks that we printed in-house, six iterations of those bad boys. We put a lot of time into that. It's really the evidence of the design process is going back and seeing what didn't work and revising that. And we have a ratchet and pull system, so once the robot's up there and the match has ended, the robot's disabled, it's not going to fall down and it keeps it nice and steady on there. We also have the adjustable hooks, so when they're on the switch, as the switch is tilting, the robot stays nice and straight and doesn't move and allows our alliance partners to be able to climb onto the switch as well. And that's our robot, Darth Underus the Wise.
Hey, Mark, can I say something? I just want to let you know that I do have a, I do have a kid in the middle school program. So what we talk about, and I won't make you answer this question live on air, but the question always is, which is more important, hardware or software? I won't make you answer that question. I don't want, it's hard.
I don't want to offend the programming team.
Yeah, there you go, the programming team.
But can we, can we have, I know you've got your coaches, advisors here, you've got some mentors and volunteers, and some team that couldn't present. Could we just have everybody stand up with those robotics shirts on? Can we get a round of applause?
Yeah, we've got our 20, 25 students, 12 mentors strong back there. Thank you, guys. Really supportive. Thank everybody for being here on the team.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
And thank you guys for listening to us.
Oh, absolutely.
This is where I always say too, is you are all welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting, but you are more than welcome to go enjoy the day and find, find something else to do. I'm sure you've got some things, some studying to do. So thank you so much. Really excited, I'm sure campus is really excited to follow that. So do you have some, you guys can come on up. We've got Jared and Gary. I'll let you guys introduce yourself officially from, from campus construction. I would hope that, did you guys bring like a robot or?
Yeah, we were hoping they'd just go through our slides for us. We can't hold a candle to that.
Thank you for being here for the capital projects update. I like when you guys introduce yourself for the board and especially for the community watching. And the show is yours.
My name's Gary Hoffman, campus, project executive for campus construction.
My name is Jared Miller. I'm a senior project manager for campus.
So Jared's going to present to you some photographs this evening to highlight the work that's been ongoing for the past two years here in the district, largely with the additions that have been added and the interior renovations. Work has progressed very well and we're still anticipating completion by the end of August this year. So Jared, we'll take it from here.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, thank you again for having us. I think these are immensely helpful for everyone that, whether it's because of COVID or just, just because it's tough to get out on these construction sites to see what's actually going on, it's nice to be able to run through and at least give you a little update of where we're at with construction. So we'll get right into it. Oh, wrong direction. All right. So in previous meetings, we've talked about Cobble's Elementary School Classroom Edition. As you know, this was turned over last, at the beginning of the school year. The only thing we're waiting on out here is some site work that will be completed once the building is free of students and staff. So that anticipated completion date on that site work is sometime late July. New to Cobble's, we've gone in and completed the building portion of the loading dock addition. You can see it on the right there. This'll help with receiving of paper and other deliveries into the building. Again, this, the site work over here will follow suit with the rest of the building. Next up is Indian Landing. This is the classroom addition out front. As you can see on the left, lower side of that photo, we've got some retaining walls and the new sidewalk in place. The building's been in place for some time, but now we've got all of the new windows. Again, another site that is prepped to follow Cobble's in the same kind of end-of-July period for getting everything paved. That's the outside. We'll take you on the inside. This is two photos from one of the classrooms in the new addition. As you can see, lots of new casework. The floor finishes are in place. Really the only thing missing from this space to be able to Really the only thing missing from this space, to be able to turn it over, is to get the rest of the ceiling tile dropped, and to get the corridor terrazzo floors installed. So ideally, we're waiting for the first break in summer to get after those, all the preparation will be in place probably by the end of this month to be ready to roll as soon as students are out of the building. Out back at Indian Landing, this is your cafeteria addition. There's been a lot of work done in here, as you can see in the picture on the left, that's what we call a cloud ceiling, it helps with acoustics, it's also very nice looking. You don't really get a good grasp of how large that new space is from the photo, but it'll be nice to have a lot of new natural light into that space, as well as a lot more room for students. The picture on the right, obviously, is the exterior of that space. With that, we have some site work to tie back together, and once that's finished, you'll be able to utilize the parent drop-off in a new way, so I think that will help with safety and with some of the congestion along the road outside of that school. One of the, one of the things at bid day that we were not at the time able to award, and it was part of one of the previous board meetings, we weren't able to originally award the Bay Trail Boiler Room alternate, and that was to replace the two boilers that are on, that are in that space. Because we did so well budget-wise throughout the project, we were able to award that recently, and as you can see in these three pictures, the picture on the left being the old boilers coming out, upper right is a photo of the existing tanks being demoed and removed from the, that space, and in the lower right, those are the new boilers that will replace the old, much more efficient, with a lot of space savings, obviously you can tell just the left to right photos. So the school will benefit from those as far as efficiency and more space within that boiler room. Here we have the exterior of the Scribner Elementary Cafeteria Edition. We have some exterior framing, which will carry some exterior panels, and that'll give the, the final look to the outside of the space. So all of the white on the left-hand side, or towards the center of the photo, is your cafeteria addition. Next to that is a new music room and some offices, and then on the end there, which was already turned over for temporary cafeteria use, is the new gymnasium. The work scheduled for the rest of this is, obviously, we have to do the exterior panels, get the terrazzo installed within the cafeteria, and a new rubberized floor system will go into that gymnasium once it's no longer being used as the serving area. Again, moving inside, the picture on the left, it's kinda at a strange angle, but that is the new entry to the rear of this space. You can kinda see it on the right, it's a little off to the distance in the photo on the right, but these are some composite panels on the walls, it gives kind of a modern look to the space. In the space you're looking at on the right-hand side is the actual new cafeteria space, in addition to what was there previously. So, a lot, again, and a lot more natural light, and a lot more space again for the students. On the left of that photo of the cafeteria, you see an overhead door, there's a series of three of those in that space, and that will open up to allow people on the existing cafeteria side to enter into the, the new side, so it'll be a very open space. With the cafeteria improvements, we also followed with kitchen renovations, so all-new cooler and freezer, new serving lines, which will be turned over, obviously, for use next school year. Tile on the walls for ease of maintenance, epoxy floors, it's a really, really clean and nice new space for the folks to come back into once it's turned over to them in early summer. Out front of Scribner is the Scribner Classroom Edition. Photos on the inside of the building are much the same, the building was actually occupied when we were in there. These spaces are turned over for use, there's four classrooms in there as well as the other two buildings. Again, a lot of cubbies, new casework, that space was turned over, I believe, in early May, just before all of the students came back, so it was nice, timing-wise, to be able to get them into that space. The work that remains there, as you can see, is some of the site work. This area shown on the right will be a emergency egress path that will be paved between what's now that Bay Trail and the classroom addition, and there will be some recreational striping, such as forest square and hopscotch, put in that space so it can be utilized, not just for emergency egress, but also for a bit of a recreation area as the, the students will spill out into that area from those classrooms. And then in the, the next few months, as of the first week of July at the high school, we will be replacing the turf. So the contractor's 100% on board, that work will start, they will mobilize, I believe, on July 6th. So, that area will be obviously taken down for use for approximately one month, it'll be turned back over at, at the very latest, by the beginning of July, but a whole new turf field. Along with this, we are also, because of good budget standing, we were able to award some additional roofing at the high school, and that work will be kinda taking place at the same time. A lot of their materials will be stored up on the roof, so very low impact, and we got in, with the market being what it is with materials, we were able to get in just before a lot of the price increases, so we saw a lot of savings compared to where we are even today, even a week after the, the project was awarded, pricing increased by almost 40%. So we got in just under the wire, and we're gonna be tackling some additional roof areas. As far as updates, again, like I said, we are scheduled to turn over everything on time, and we are well under budget, so very positive things project-wise. With that, we'll open to any questions regarding the project.
Board members, any questions on the Capitol Project, or comments? Lisa?
I think a month or two ago, there was some flooring that we were waiting on because of a delay, has that been accommodated for in this timing, or is it on its way, or?
So that, that flooring material that we were waiting on is actually the epoxy terrazzo that was delayed due to some of the factories in Texas being shut down due to the storms down there months ago. What we did with that is, we had that scheduled to take place over break, as to have no impact on students and staff. We got it in weeks later, so they weren't able to hit that time period for install. We do have the material, and that is what we're gonna be trailing. As soon as students and staff are out of those buildings, we'll be proceeding with that. All the preparatory work to, to get in place before then will be done by then, so as soon as we have the opportunity, that'll be getting installed. So, there was a slight delay, it ends up working out, so that everything still gets turned over on time.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else? Great, well, thank you, we're so glad to see this finally reach fruition.
We just want to take a moment just to recognize the board and thank you for your confidence in us and our, the district to manage this project. We've had a lot of successes, and we've capitalized on opportunities, and you've, there's a lot that's been done in two years, and with the headwinds of COVID, we appreciate your faith in us, and we hope that you're happy with, with the delivery. As I promised to Tom two years ago, we would have it done by the end of August, not knowing what we were about to go through in the last year.
I held you to that, though.
My word is my word, and here you are, you will have it in time for school in September, and it's all good, a lot of good came out of this project, so we appreciate it and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both, that, that's wonderful. You can hang out as well, or join the robotics kids. We really appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Oh, that concludes superintendent's special reports.
Brings us to student representative report. Abby?
Hello, everybody, for the last time, I say it is that time again. To start things off, at Penfield High School, the girls' lacrosse team won their first sectional game last night against Hilton. And the National Honor Society held a car wash to raise money and food donations for the Penfield Ecumenical Food Shelf. At Bay Trail Middle School, students participating in the spring concerts were able to perform in person for friends and family. At Indian Landing, a speaker, a speaker came into various classes to teach students about the, the effects of vaping, and how it can affect them and their family. At Cobble's, students playing instruments had the opportunity to perform at the Penfield Musical Festival, which took place at the Penfield Town Amphitheater. And third graders learned about life cycles as they took care of caterpillars and watched them grow into butterflies, one of my favorites. At Harris Hill, a PTA member handcrafted a pair of Harris Hill birdhouses, which are located at the front of the school. And to show appreciation to the teaching assistants at Harris Hill, the Sunshine Committee and PTA coordinated a special breakfast in their honor. Lastly, for district-wide news, May 31st was Memorial Day, and families throughout Penfield took time to honor the men and women who died while serving the US military. And before I close my report, I would like to say, I am so grateful to have had this opportunity to have this position, and it has been wonderful getting to know each of you and hearing from the Penfield community as well, so thank you.
Thank you, Abby, any questions or comments for Abby?
I have a comment.
You have a comment?
We're gonna miss you, Abby, very much. You did a wonderful job.
Thank you, I'll miss you too.
And we will, we will be honoring Abby in a little bit in the, in the meeting, so I know, I have lots of words for you.
Which brings us to visitor speaking time. This is the designated time for district residents to bring their comments to the board. The board encourages residents to share their opinions, voice concerns, and offer suggestions in a constructive atmosphere. Matters involving particular individuals or specifics of negotiation are not permitted during public session and should be addressed privately with the board president or superintendent. Comments brought to the board will be taken under consideration, however, this is not a time when the board can answer questions or engage in dialogue. A request to speak form must be filled out prior to the start of the meeting and given to the district clerk. Speakers are expected to identify themselves with their name and address before presenting, and limit their comments to five minutes or less. The board president reserves the right to limit total amount of visitor speaking time based on the length of the agenda. Written communications to the board are also encouraged. Our first speaker is McKinley Hart. Oh, fantastic.
Hi, my name is McKinley Hart, and I live at 56 Willerhurst Drive. We should ha, we should not have to wear masks, it's unfair to people in our schools. We should enjoy our childhood, we should be able to take our masks off whenever we want on in school, and not have teachers have to say, "Put your mask back on," because sometimes we really just need a mask break. I think we should stand up, I'm going to be honest, I did not ever like wearing the masks, and that's why I'm here tonight. I hate school now because of the masks. School used to be a lot more fun, but now, oh, I think it's unfair. When I wear my mask, I feel uncomfortable, and most people have problems with breathing. Everybody should be able to see the beauty in your face, thank you.
That was awesome.
Yes. Thank you McKinley for coming down tonight and speaking to us. Next speaker is Rich Tyson. Hello, Mr. Tyson, please state your name and address.
You guys are about to know me by now, come on, Rich Tyson, 21 Noel Top Drive. So I know we come in here with a pretty clear way of where I think I'm gonna take this thing with you, you got five minutes tonight, right? Thank you, sir, appreciate it. So, I'm gonna admit, probably like a lot of parents, I wasn't paying attention for the first year and a half that my daughter was in school, she's a second grader at Indian Landing, and you know, everything seemed to go well, you know, the teachers were nice, the principal was nice, she came home with a smile on her face, she was making new friends, right? Now I think COVID, probably for everybody in this room, has opened up our eyes to a lot of, you know, issues and challenges that we have. I'd also like to acknowledge Dr. Putnam, you've always been responsive to me, and I appreciate that very much, anytime I've reached out with concerns, and there have been a number. But you've also expressed to me that your frustration comes from Albany, and it seems the more I'm asking questions and getting frustrated, it seems like Albany's making an awful lot of decisions for our community, that I thought we elected you guys to, to take care of, and, and hopefully support our superintendent. Maybe I don't know exactly how all these things work, but it seems like he should be getting support to make the tough decisions that Albany's punting on and not making for us. So, Dr. Putnam, if you need new board members or something, blink twice, we'll come in and help out, we're more than happy to support you as parents. The reality of it is-
Just for the record, I didn't blink twice, just so you know, but I, but I do-
We'll ta, we're gonna check the tape, but I, we'll hold you to it. But, it seems to me that we need a strong board advocating for our community. We as parents can't do it ourselves, we, we come here and we speak, but something that's also lacking, that I've been really kinda shocked about, is that there's not a dialogue. I feel like I don't know anywhere where any of you board members stand on any of these issues, and there's a ton of them that are faced in this community right now, especially with COVID, so maybe I missed it, but is there ever a point where there's a town hall type of event for us parents to ask questions and get actual feedback from the board? And as much as I hear is the frustrations with Albany, and that only so many decisions can be made at the local level, I hear that we're now talking about hiring another superintendent for DEI, which as I understand it, is an initiative that's being pushed down from New York State, so why do we need another administrator sitting in the air-conditioned building? Because the schools aren't air-conditioned, and that poor little girl is not getting those mask breaks like my daughter's not, so why do we need another high-paid administrator sitting in the air-conditioned building, just waiting for New York State to tell you what to tell us all is gonna happen out here, without ever having any question and answer period for the parents, so that we can find out why these things are happening in our community, and if we really want them to happen in our community? So the last thing I'll leave you with is, I'm gonna look, I think this is the camera, I've received a ton of fantastic feedback from other parents and folks in this community for coming out here and speaking, but it doesn't do you any good to just email me or send me a message on Facebook thanking me, as much as I appreciate that, the folks up here need to see you in this room, and they need to hear from you at this microphone, because without that, they're going to assume it's only a few number of people out here in the community that are upset, and they're gonna totally ignore it. So, we want a dialogue with you, we want to support you, but we want to know that we're supported as well, and I appreciate your time as always.
Thank you, Mr. Tyson. Next is Lauren Luft. Ms. Luft, please state your name and address.
Yes, hi, Lauren Luft, 2123 Baird Road. Thirty-plus states have no mask requirements in their schools, but somehow, New York State, who even you said has one of the lowest infection rates in the entire country, needed clarification from the CDC before lifting their overreaching mask mandates in schools? That doesn't seem right. It kinda seems like they were just looking for someone to blame, and I understand, you guys are under a lot of pressure, and there's a lot of misinformation out there, a lot of stirring the pot from the governor, however, we need to take a stand, and there were other school districts this week that did take a stand, and Penfield wasn't one of them. It's just really, really disappointing, as a parent of this district, to have to tell my child that, no, you, you have to choose between wearing a mask in 90-degree weather or going to school. That shouldn't be a choice that a seven-year-old has to make, that shouldn't be a choice- That shouldn't be a choice that a seven-year-old has to make. That shouldn't be a choice that I have to make for my daughter, okay? You guys are in very powerful positions up here, but you don't own my child, okay? Governor Cuomo doesn't own my child, okay? Mendoza doesn't own my child. My child's not going to be wearing a mask in those conditions. Talk about equity. Talk about equity. My daughter deserves an education. My daughter deserves to be in school, does she not? Does, does not every child deserve to be in school? They all do. And none of them deserve to be suffocated in 90-degree weather. And I understand that the buildings are air-conditioned. Some of them, some of them, some of them are air-conditioned. I bet you all were sitting in air conditioning that day, probably social distance with your mask down. But there were students in this community sitting in un-air-conditioned buildings with a mask on. With a mask on, and you might say, "Oh, well, they could take a mask break if they wanted it, if they wanted to." My daughter literally is such a rule follower, there is no way that even if she was about to pass out, she would raise her hand and ask for a mask break. You put me in that position. You put every single parent in that position. Shame on all of you. Stand up. There are other school districts standing up, and I know I'm getting emotional, and Dr. Putnam, you've been wonderful responding to me. I appreciate it. And so has my daughter's teacher and Mr. Nelson, her principal at Harris Hill. We are frustrated, just like you are, and I know that you have a really hard job to do, but we're asking you to do a better one. Stand up for these kids. And this is not where it ends. This is not where it ends. This is not where it ends. The diversity, equity, and inclusion? Let's go there for a second, just for a second, because I'm sure I'm running low on time. Okay, stop trying to indoctrinate our children. Diversity, equity, and inclusion, it sounds nice, but it's very scary. My seven-year-old does not need sex education, thank you very much, okay? She does not need it. She is prepubes- prepubescent. Okay, you don't get to make that decision for me. You don't get to make that decision for my child, okay? No child should have to endure that, okay? If it's your child, you make that choice. I'm making that choice for mine, okay? You need to understand that these are God's children, okay? You are indoctrinating them to hate their bodies the way that they were born, the way that they were made, okay? Their God-given rights are being hung over their head, and we know that once we get to 70% vaccination, because we're almost there, that Cuomo's gonna lift these mandates, oh magically, everything's gonna go back to normal. I think not. Schools are not included in that. Read the fine print. Schools are not included in that. They want to vaccinate our children this fall. What are you all gonna do to stop it? Please tell me, because if you're not gonna do anything, I'll move out of the state. That's what we're gonna do. You want people to get up and move? We will. We will do something. We are begging you at this point. Good God.
Thank you, Ms. Luft.
You're welcome.
You've got a really good cheering audience right here, this little one here. I like that.
Next up is Carla Warner. Ms. Warner, please state your name and address.
Gotta bring it down to size. My name is Carla Warner. I live at Baird Road. And so I'd like to address you and say good evening. I stand before you tonight as a concerned resident about many policies that have been implemented and are being upheld by those that we've entrusted our children's education and safety to. It was once stated by Edmund Burke, "The only thing necessary for triumph of evil is for good men to do nothing." But when a good man fails to be a voice, we, as mothers and concerned citizens, need to take up the gauntlet and say no to those things. They're doing great physical, mental, emotional harm to our children. What are the specifics? Number one, masking of our children to protect them. This policy is still being mandated, it's necessary, by this school district and many others around the state to keep our children quote-unquote "safe." The facts are, this is cruel, especially to young children. It is psychologically harmful. It is physically- It is physically harmful, according to some Italian plastic surgeons. It is detrimental in social development. Not able to see an adult's facial expressions and misrepresent information, misinterpret information, especially for children on the autistic spectrum. How can they develop proper social skills? Another point is inability to concentrate in headaches due to lack of oxygen, leading to unhappiness, malaise, impaired learning, drowsiness, and fatigue, harmful to health. Breeding grounds for bacteria, mold, and fungi in the masks themselves. Unless you have a mask that's changed every eight hours, this is a great breeding ground for other infective things. I could go on about other policy problems, but to me, this was the most urgent. The safety and the welfare of our children, our next generation. I cite Sweden as an example of no deaths in the children who wore no masks. I would recommend the following. Number one, immediate action of the school board to respond to parents' concerns and protect and uphold the welfare of our children. Number two, participation of concerned parents to help shape and uphold policies in the school district concerning our children's health. Number three, I am concerned about no feedback from emails by others that I have heard in prior meetings. And during these sessions, there needs to be a forum, a place to hear, and how and what considerations you take into account to form the policies that affect our children and their families. I will leave you with these thoughts. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created and equal by their creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Failure to make policies that uphold these tenets is akin to tyranny, which is cruel and oppressive governmental rule. I trust. I trust you will choose to uphold these tenets for the good of our children and our community. And I will leave you with a little ditty here, because it is from a music from 1957, and it goes like this. Take off the mask, that's all I would ask you to do. Just take off the false face and don't meal, false face to dance with you.
Thank you, Ms. Warner. Next up is Nicole Phelps. Welcome, Ms. Phelps. Please state your name and address.
Hello, Nicole Phelps, Two Berrywood Circle. A little taller than the last speaker, so I'm gonna adjust this, and I will spare everybody, and I will not sing, because that would be terrible for everybody in the room. Good evening, Dr. Putnam and the Board of Education. You know, I, I have some things to talk about tonight. I will shorten my part on masks, because I think that the point has been made loud and clear. But I'd like to start by, you know, what is the role of an advocate? The role of an advocate is to offer independent support to those who feel they are not being heard and to ensure they are taken seriously and that their rights are respected. I am here as an advocate for my children, as well as children who attend Penfield schools. Our poor children are not able to speak for themselves, and as a mother, I am here to fight for what is right. Um, you know, I, I have a paragraph on masks, but I'll just say, you know, my, my children came home yesterday, today, they were hot, they were sweaty. They didn't feel well. Um, other mothers have echoed, you know, I've said you can take mask breaks, I'm sure you can. Well, we're not supposed to. So, I would just ask that we please ask the teachers, you know, the wonderful teachers of Penfield, to maybe just say to the class, "Hey, time for a mask break. Remind the kids to take the mask off," because it is impacting them. It's impacting how they feel, how they feel about school. So I'll, I'll leave you that on masks. Penfield parents have been advocating for our children for over a year. I, I really would like to know when this Board of Education is, is going to stand up for our children. We haven't seen a lot of advocacy. Maybe it's happening, but, you know, to the point of other parents tonight, we haven't seen it, and it's really disappointing. And I'd also like to ask, when are parents going to be allowed back in schools? COVID, COVID numbers are at a record low. Vaccines are readily available for adults who want them. Yet, I can't even walk into the office of my children's school. As a parent, I find this very concerning, not to see what's going on inside my child's school. What is the plan to allow parents back in? I have heard that consultants with clipboards are walking around, and they're allowed inside. Why am I not allowed as a mother? I fully expect to be allowed entry into my children's school in the fall. If there is one thing that I've learned from this pandemic, it is that parents need to be involved in their children's education and what goes on in their day. And lastly, I've heard a lot of information about curriculum being pushed in through K, from K through 12 through Pathstone. I'd like to know where I can view the entire curriculum, watch the videos, look at anything that my children are going to be taught. It seems like the district is possibly hiding things and not being transparent. As a parent, I want to know exactly what my children are being taught at school. Where can this Pathstone curriculum be viewed? Also, I know the district is hiring an assistant superintendent for DEI. What is the hiring practice for this position? How is this person selected? I'm hearing it's a highly compensated position, and would just like to know where I can reference details on the hiring process. It is time for the leadership in this district to stand with parents and advocate for our children. Penfield schools need to be leaders in this community. Taxpayers pay a premium to have their children attend school here. We expect a premium service to be delivered. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Phelps. And finally, Brian, forgive me, Grani? Granny? Can please state your name and address?
Brian Grani, 19 Finchwood Lane. So first off, I'd like to say that I know, I'm a personal friend of Kim O'Toole's, who actually started the Rolling Thunder 1511 program here at Penfield. And I know she's very proud at what it's grown into, and hearing these kids talk today was great to hear. A great program. Looks like it's changed a lot of kids' lives over the years, and, um, again, know that she'd be very proud of that. So, uh, the other thing I wanted to talk about was I noticed that the Penfield School District updated their DEI webpage recently, in the last week or so. Uh, there wasn't any official correspondence sent to parents, but I appreciate the effort to be more transparent to everyone. Uh, there was a couple of comments, questions I had reading through the new website. Uh, number one, I noticed the fourth-grade curriculum description was written in the future tense, implying that the curriculum hadn't been given yet. So is the school district trying to give the appearance that, um, they communicated this course before giving to the students? Uh, just for clarification, the course has already been provided to the students, and a lot of parents didn't know about the course when it was given. The other thing I wanted to mention is the school administration had previously communicated that this would be sent, that a clarification to fourth-grade parents would be sent out for the incorrect definitions that were provided in the course. And to date, no correspondence has been given on that. So I'd ask for people to follow up on that. The other concerning thing on the website, uh, throughout the website, it, it calls for implicit biases is used frequently through the website. And I guess I'm concerned about that. Are te- are kids going to be taught differently based on their skin color? I, I'm not quite sure what that exactly means, but it'd be nice to get some clarification on that. And then, uh, I think another parent had mentioned, the website states that social justice standards will be implemented in grades K through 12. Again, that'd be interesting to know what exactly that means. Uh, the, the other thing that I found out in the last couple of weeks is that there's an active board member with direct ties to Pathstone Foundation. And I'd like to know if this person is getting money directly from the organization? Or through Pathstone contracts to a family company? It just, what makes it more interesting, I see that Fairport and Pittsburgh have both cut ties to Pathstone, and I have not seen anything that Penfield, I think Penfield's still continuing their relationship with them. So it'd be interesting to find out some more clarification from the board and communicate to parents what's going on there. So, finally, in reality, the, the Penfield School District is pretty evenly dis- divided between a political standpoint, and I'm having trouble understanding why the school district is driving critical race theory messaging so hard in our school district. Uh, you know, what problem are we trying to solve with it? Do we really think teaching children that solely based on their skin color they are born with, that they should feel guilty about it? Future generations are going to suffer from this type of destructive messaging. I think there's a lot of great alternative diversity training out there that I hope that the school board and school considers and, uh, versus the current path they're headed down. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Grani. That concludes the special, um, the visitor speaking time. So I'll turn it over to superintendent's report.
Be respectful. You're elected representative and represent us. This isn't about you, boy.
You're not gonna stand up here and do anything to me, asshole. Hey. Stop!
Okay.
Come on, Phil. Hey, come on.
All right, we're gonna move into recess.
You've been there, been here this whole time. Come on. You got something to say? What did you call me?
I didn't call you an asshole. Yeah, what? I said you are elected to represent us.
We're resuming the June 8th meeting of the Board of Education. We have completed visitor speaking time, and in accordance with Executive Order 202.108, we are gonna resume this as a virtual meeting, which will bring us to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. So we have some student and staff honors this evening, just a couple of updates from me, and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Driffl for some brief business updates. Uh, tenure and years of service awards. This is the last board meeting of the school year, and it's typically when we celebrate staff earning tenure and years of service awards. And due to COVID protocols, we've been unable to celebrate in the typical fashion. Last year, we weren't able to, to do it because we were virtual, and this year, just the number of people that would need to be here for the celebration. So awards, we wanted the community to know, are being handled by buildings and departments this year. And just on behalf of the district and the Board of Education, congratulations to our faculty, staff, and administration who earn tenure and/or are celebrating benchmark years of service. Thank you very much. Uh, we have an art award. Congratulations to PHS senior Cecilia Plimpton on being selected as the 2021 Student Award winner by the Penfield Art Association. Cecilia plans to enter the Metals and Jewelry Design Program at RIT in the fall. Her artwork and profile are currently featured on the Penfield Art Association website. Amazing talent and hard work. Melding, uh, welding award. Congratulations to PHS senior Jack Josephson, who won a first-place award from the American Welding Society based on his work in the welding fabrication class at Monroe, one BOSI's. Uh, we wish Jack tons of, of success, because what an incredible, uh, job to be able to do with welding. I am not gonna read all these names, because in my age, I cannot read the screen, but we have 78 PHS students who were recently inducted into the National Honor Society. They are in the agenda listed out. Congratulations to those students, uh, joining the National Honor Society of Penfield High School. Uh, recognition of a board member, Will Jaeger. Uh, we just want to say thank you for his outstanding service as a board member, uh, Board of Education member. The students, faculty, and staff truly appreciate his hard work. truly appreciate his hard work, dedication, and countless hours of service he generously provided throughout the years. And we wish Bill luck.
Oh, wait, I thought I had one more.
There it is. I skipped one. I'm so sorry. So thank you to our student rep Abby. Thank you for your fantastic student reports. Awesome service to the Board of Education. No doubt you'll have a bright future as you work towards your physician assistant degree at the Rochester Institute of Technology. Congratulations and best wishes for Abby. And the board gave Abby some flowers earlier this evening. And we just want to say thank you very, very much for everything she's done. Also, our recognition and thank you. Congratulations and a heartfelt thanks to Ms. Barbara Gregory, our Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources for six years of exceptional service. And thank you. This is your last official board meeting after six years with Penfield. Thank you so much for all that you've done for us. And also to Mr. Jim Pfeifer, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, for eight years of exceptional service. Jim, I got to work for Jim as a principal and then Jim got to work for me as a superintendent. And I've enjoyed him both of those times. And Jim is not retiring, but has moved to, down to the southern tier and will be, will be spending some time down there. So you always got a home in Penfield, both of you. And just for some Penfield updates, briefly, mask updates, hot topic. New York State Governor and New York State Department of Health caused a great deal of confusion with a letter to the CDC released on June 4th. Many, including myself, believed that the indoor masking guidance for New York State schools was going to be changed on Monday, June 7th. Later that day, New York State issued, New York State Education Department issued a statement that no changes had actually been made. And then the governor had a press conference on Monday, June 7th. We all watched in anticipation. And he followed up with a press release and made it very clear that outdoor masks would be optional. We already planned for that for Monday. But indoor masks for schools were still required. Obviously, that caused a lot of confusion. And this past weekend was another example of the confusing and ever-changing rules that New York State schools must follow regarding COVID protocols. So some districts across the state actually announced on Sunday morning that they would have no masks and then Sunday night retracted that. Some districts announced changes on Sunday and had to walk them back on Monday afternoon. So the Penfield Central School District continues to follow the required New York State guidance, but is allowing more mask breaks when students are sitting in their classrooms. We know that three of our six buildings do have central air. The ones that don't do get warm. And we are working and teachers are willing to give mask breaks and students can take them when they're sitting at their seats and socially distanced. We've got a couple of weeks left until our elementary schools are done. Our high school will be ending except for assessments a little bit earlier. And again, frustrating. It is a rule we have to follow. And there is a light at the end of the tunnel because our Penfield Central School District's reopening advisory committees will continue to meet as we enter the summer. There is a focus on a more traditional September start. And we continue to advocate for local control. So we got a little local control when the governor said that masks were optional outside, but districts could decide what to do. We jumped on that and have an absolute optional outdoor masking one on school property. And although the school year wraps up in two weeks, the advocacy and work will continue this summer. The signs are pointing to the fact that, that we do believe that masks will not be required in September. We have to wait, obviously, and see what happens. But I don't see how the governor can walk that back and try to make it continue with the number of vaccination rates that are happening across the state. And that is the end of my report unless there's any questions from the Board of Education.
Questions? Nope, I don't see any questions.
And I will turn it over now to Dr. Driffl for business updates.
Thank you, Dr. Putnam. Good evening, Board. Just a couple of updates from the business office for your action and for your information this evening. The first of which is the 2021-2022 Foundation Aid Plan. So this is a new requirement that was written into the state legislative budget for districts that received greater than $10 million or greater than 10% in year-over-year new New York State Foundation Aid. We received $2.2 million in new foundation aid or 16% year-over-year, which makes us part of this new requirement. So I should note that the state education department put out a memo saying that they are not necessarily going to be enforcing this new plan. They're not going to be collecting it. They're not putting out a template. But it's incumbent upon school districts to make sure we're fulfilling the mandate. So our plan is to preserve instructional staffing, specifically related to class size, English language learners, students with disabilities, and social emotional learning. Feedback on this Foundation Aid Plan is encouraged by calling my office at 585-249-5724 within the next two weeks by June 22nd. If there is no additional feedback, the plan would be posted on the website by 7:01 in accordance with that legislation. For the last couple of years now, after the last round of comptrollers audits, it's a requirement that the Board of Education authorize year-end fund balance authorizations so that there, it's a transparent attempt so that the board is not caught by surprise when the audit finishes come August or September. So with year-end money winding down here the last month of the year in June, we're paying off some debt as the 18 and 19 projects close out. We received the report earlier from Campus Construction. The way we've been financing those two projects for cash flow has been through short-term issuances called bond anticipation notes, bands, because of the low interest rate environment. Now that those are wrapping up, we need to convert to a permanent serial bond financing. So that'll be actually taking place tomorrow morning. So, and as I mentioned, pending the final audit verification, the Audit Committee and then full Board of Education will receive these full year-end authorizations and they are subject to change. So here's where we currently stand as of last week with, with a month ago in the school year. The top-line numbers is that we expect $103.6 million in revenue. We had beginning-of-year encumbrances. So those are the purchase orders that carried over from the 1920 year into the 2021 year, a little larger than years past due to the large laptop order that we had in the shutdown last spring. We had some reserve authorizations this year for bus purchases, land purchase. And then back in the fall, we had a tax surchargeary judgment from the courts for $40,000. And then where we project expenditures to end up come the fiscal year end, June 30th, is $102.1 million, which generates about a $1.5 million operational surplus for us. We estimate year-end encumbrances to kind of come back down to normal levels, around $2 million. Interest is a lot less this year, only about $30,000 due to the interest rate environment. And in accordance with our budget development materials, the assigned fund balance comes down to $450,000. And we maintain the 4% unassigned statute relative to next year's budget at $4.1 million, which leaves us with a little under $5.5 million of available fund balance to earmark towards our previously authorized reserve funds. So the recommendation for the board to consider this evening would be to have two transfers. One is from the ERS Retirement Reserve to the TRS Retirement Reserve. As a reminder, the TRS Retirement Reserve is bound, it's limited on an annual basis how much you can fund it. 2% of the prior year TRS salaries. So we had about $35 million in TRS salaries last year. So $350,000 is about 1%, $700,000 is that 2%. We're allowed to fund that up to five years. So we can do that for the next three years. And where the ERS Reserve is funded relative to our annual expense, we're able to pull from there. The EBLR Reserve is the Employee Benefit Accrued Liability Reserve. This is for any contractual separation costs related to accruals for sick days and vacation days through collective bargaining. It's recognized as a long-term liability on our balance sheet and our external audit. So we're going to increase that to match the liability, around $350,000. And then due to unemployment being overfunded last year, with the concerns around COVID, we added some additional money there. We can reduce the funding in that reserve. Workers' compensation is doing well. We are going to increase the liability reserve, the reserve for liabilities claims. That's allowed to be funded up to 3% of our budget, so a little over $3 million. That would mitigate any losses against uninsured claims that insurance might not cover. And then, as before mentioned on the last sign, the assigned fund balance and unassigned fund balance. The board has some agreements for approval this evening to consider. We have intermunicipal extensions for fuel sharing with four of our partner agencies, the Monroe County Sheriff's Office, the Town of Penfield, the Penfield Fire District, and Monroe One BOSIS. All of these are extensions to existing agreements. We value the partnerships with all of these organizations. And then additionally, the BOSIS contract for next school year commencing July 1st for the total contract and for the separate transportation contract component of BOSIS services. A quick federal stimulus update for the board. CARES Act funding requests have been submitted to the state. CARES Act was the stimulus package that was passed last March and which we received about $300,000. So those funds should be making their way to Penfield shortly. The application for the SIRS of funds, the stimulus passed last December, has been extended to July 15th. The district is continuing to work internally on potential uses for these dollars. As a reminder, it's about $4 million for Penfield Central. And the application for the American Rescue Plan Act funds is still not available. U.S. Department of Education guidance released last week may alter the spending requirements that were imposed by New York State. The federal government said that state agencies can't impose additional restrictions on those federal funds, like the state did in their state budget by saying a certain amount had to be devoted to learning loss, a certain amount had to be devoted to after-school programs, a certain amount had to be devoted to summer programs. So we'll keep an eye on that to see if and when the guidance changes regarding those funds and when the application portal will become available. We had about $2.5 million of ARPA funds as a reminder. And then finally, board, we received an updated credit rating yesterday. It was issued by Moody's. We had a call with those folks on May 25th. Penfield Central does maintain the AA2 rating, which is above the AA3 median rating of comparable school districts. Within the report, it said that the AA2 rating incorporates Penfield's very healthy financial position, along with a low fixed cost ratio, above-average resident income levels, and stable enrollment trends. The AA2 also reflects its moderate long-term liabilities ratio. Summarizing the report, financially, the district is very strong. So with that, that bond call that we have tomorrow, this is obviously great news for what our interest rate will be. And with that, I would open a discussion.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Nope, seeing none.
That concludes superintendent reports. That concludes superintendent reports.
Which brings us to 6A on the agenda. See if I'm getting there. Okay. It is recommended that the following year-end 2020-2021 fund balance authorization be approved. This is what Dr. Driffl just presented to us. So a motion be made that the following year-end 2021 fund balance authorization be approved as follows. 459,437 designated as assigned fund balance for reduction of a tax levy. $4,173,746 is to be retained as an unassigned fund balance. $700,303 to be funded to fund the TRS Retirement Reserve from the ERS Retirement Reserve. $275,000 to fund the EBLR fund from the Unemployment Insurance Fund. $1 million to fund the liability reserve. And any remaining available fund balance projected herein as up to $6 million to be allocated to the 2021 Capital Reserve. So may I have a motion and a second that these authorizations be approved? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the BOSIS transportation contract for the 2021-22 school year. This contract, in the contracts, in the amount of $697,260 for the school year transportation, including disabled vocational and shuttle transportation, and $350,000 for field trips, were received from the Board of Cooperative Education Services for Transportation, provided to Penfield students for the 2021-2022 school year. If the board approves, a following motion is in order. The motion be made in second that the Board of Education authorize the signature of the president to the contracts made in the amount of $697,260 and $3,500 from the Board of Cooperative Education Services covering transportation provided Penfield students for the 2021-2022 school year. The dollar amounts are in approximation, the district will be billed for the actual number of students transported and aids used. So may I have a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. It is recommended that the BOSIS improve, that the Board of Education approve the BOSIS initial contract for services for the 2021-22 school year. A contract in the amount of $10,472,416.83 has been received from the Board of Cooperative Education Services covering services to be provided to the Penfield students for the 2021-22 school year. If the board approves, the following motion is in order. A motion be made in second that the Board of Education authorize the signature of the president to the contract in the amount of $10,472,416.83 from the Board of Cooperative Educational Services covering the services to be provided to students in the, for the 2021-2022 school year, and that the payment of the subsequent invoices for services according to the schedule of 10 times per year, plus additional supplemental billing as needed. The superintendent of schools is also authorized to amend the contract from time to time as additional services are requested or dropped. So may I have a motion or a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Intermunicipal fuel agreement. The district allows the Monroe County Sheriff's Department to fuel its patrol cars at the district pumps. The district is reimbursed for this fuel by the Monroe County through an intermunicipal agreement. The county is charged based on our cost of fuel on the state contract plus a 10 cents per gallon surcharge. The district initially entered into this agreement in the 20, in the 2006, 2007 year and has renewed it annually. Either party may discontinue the agreement within 60 days' notice. So whereas the County of Monroe has indicated a desire to extend the intermunicipal agreement with the Penfield Central School District, and whereas the Board of Education finds that there is a mutual benefit to such an arrangement, therefore, be resolved that the superintendent of schools is hereby authorized to extend the intermunicipal agreement with the County of Monroe for the provision of vehicle refueling by the county for the period of September 1st, 2021 through August 31st, 2022. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. And another intermunicipal fuel agreement. The district allows Monroe One BOSIS, Penfield Fire District, and the Town of Penfield to fuel their vehicles at the district pumps under the district. The district is reimbursed for the fuel based on our cost of the state contract plus 10 cents per gallon surcharge. And agreement will continue under the same terms. Renewing this agreement does not pose a burden on the district and benefits Monroe One BOSIS, Penfield Fire District, and the Town of Penfield. Approval to renew these agreements is recommended. Whereas Monroe One BOSIS, Penfield Fire District, and Town of Penfield have indicated a desire to enter into a separate municipal, intermunicipal fuel agreement with the Penfield Central School District, and whereas the Board of Education finds that there is a mutual benefit to such an arrangement, therefore, be resolved that the superintendent is hereby authorized to enter an intermunicipal fuel agreement for the provisions of vehicle refueling as follows. With the Monroe One BOSIS driver ed program for the period of August 1st, 2021 through July 31st, 2024. With the Penfield Fire District for the period of September 1st, 2021 through August 31st, 2024. And with the Town of Penfield for the period of August, of July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Which brings us to textbook approval. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the recommended textbooks as presented on May 25th, 2021. So may I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments?
Do you have to do a second?
I did, yeah.
Sorry, sorry. So you got a motion and a second. The only conversation is that it's the, there were two books that were pulled from this list that were presented at the last board meeting, and so we got some public comment on those. So the board, in agenda setting for this, decided, based on that feedback, to hold two books back. That is "Long Way Down" by Jason Reynolds, which was going to be a seventh-grade read, and "On the Come-Up" by Angie Thomas, which was slated to be a 10th-grade read. The reasons for that is, two reasons, actually. We got some feedback written by a resident at the Penfield Library, which we collect that feedback, was around the language in the book. They didn't feel it was appropriate. And then also, feedback around the potential for both of those books to have negative stereotyping on African-American youth. And so because of that and that feedback, we are holding those books back. We'll do some continued review and may or may not decide to bring it back to the board. If we did, it would be a conversation again and go through the same process. But I want to let you know that, so this list that's being voted on is, does not have those two books on it.
So right, to clarify, the list is as we saw at the last meeting with those two exceptions.
Yes.
So any further questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. District and Community Meetings. We had Audit Committee Meeting. Would someone like to speak to that?
The Audit Meeting? Well, I was a little late, but I did get there. So I really can't speak to the report because I came in at the end.
Yeah, so a couple of things. First, we made a recommendation back to the committee for internal audit scope of Medicaid for next year. We discussed the comptroller's pending audit for Penfield Central, and we set the dates for next year, I think. I think that was it.
That was it.
Thank you.
And I told them all I got a new car. That's why I was late.
There we go. And then for District Community Meetings, this keeps, there was the Monroe County School Board Association Annual Meeting. This is the meeting which we review the accomplishments of the year, and then we also elect the officers for the 2021-2022 year for the Monroe County School Board Association. And that was, that was pretty much the business?
Yeah.
So there's no unfinished business? Is there any new business? So may I have a motion to adjourn?
Somewhat.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All right, we are adjourned. All those in favor? Yep. Any opposed? We are adjourned at 8:41.